Mindy?
Here.
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 Thank you, Mindy. I believe it was on January 23rd that you all received the minutes from the December 8th Board of Education meeting. Do the board members have any questions in regards to those minutes? Like to ask for a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education approve of the minutes from the December 8th, 2014 Board of Education regular minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Genau.
Second.
Have a second? Thank you, Tom. Okay. At this time, the Watertown Board of Education would like to congratulate students on their Student of the Month achievements. I'll now turn the microphone over to Dr. Carnemola.
Tradition, trying to recognize our students at our board meetings from school to school. Tonight, we have a number of students with us from Judson. I'm glad you were able to come this evening because, as you know, we rescheduled this meeting and we've missed two board meetings in the meantime. I'll call you up by grade. Don't be nervous. You just come up, shake our hand, and we'll give you your certificate. We're a little bit nervous out there tonight, from what I understand.
We're just super proud of you and want you to come up so we can shake your hand.
Because I get to see what you're doing all the time, but everyone here does not. So I want you to be here so that we can recognize you more formally. In grade three, Alana Vitale. Adrian Littlejaz. Grade four, Brielle Trudeau. She's moving on to professional life soon. Grade four, Brielle Trudeau. Grade four, Dominic Colonino. Grade five, Matthew Dolan, Doolan, excuse me. Also, grade five, Michaela Beauty. And those are our November Students of the Month from Judson. Moving on to our December Students of the Month, we have Inessa Zima. Also in grade through three, Ariane Mizari.
Ariana, congratulations.
Thank you.
And grade four, Christina Lemay. And Declan Connolly. Grade five, Henry Marino. And also in grade five, Julia Caligari. That is it for this evening. Do you mind if we take a quick break? Would you like to take a picture with our Judson students, please? Can we have a recess for?
I have a motion to recess.
We have a motion to recess. Five minutes.
Have a second?
Second.
So moved. Thank you.
Everyone come up. We're all in favor. Unfortunately, Mrs. Scully couldn't be here tonight, so you get a picture with me only.
...to form groups for intervention as well as enrichment. The faculty created a bus video for the students, which was presented at the PBIS Assembly. Students participated in narrating what the teachers did wrong and modeled the appropriate behavior. At Polk School, Mrs. Armstrong began preparations for the invention convention, and literacy night is being held tonight. At Judson, a student of the month assembly was held, where students were recognized for displaying responsibility, respect, and always being ready. Students are planning the invention convention with their advisor, Mrs. Marquardt. At Swift, Spirit Week was held, leading up to a full school spirit rally, and Grade Six Band and Chorus members and Grade Six, Seven, and Eight String students performed at their annual winter concert last Thursday. At the high school, AP test registration began on Monday and will run through February. The principal's advisory committee had its first meeting, where students selected by the guidance counselors discussed schedule changes and SSP with Mr. Jones. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. Thank you very much. And on a side note, I would like to say that some of us up here would love to see the video. Okay, moving on to item G in our agenda, public participation, our first round. Does anybody wish to address the board this evening? Does anybody wish to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item H, budget status.
The members of the Board of Education received budget status updates for both November and December 2014 in their packets, as we did not have a second December meeting during the holiday season. It's important to note that all of the year-end budget projections are based upon trends that we see year-to-date. On the right, the year-to-date column shows where we're going to be if these trends continue. There are just too many variables for us to accurately pinpoint where we will be, and we don't want to make these assumptions so early in the fiscal year. For example, we've seen a large increase in pupil transportation and outplacement tuition costs, which we know are going to be offset by the excess cost grant, but we haven't included the grant monies yet because the funds haven't been released. But as an example, if I were to use last year's grant funding number, which was $806,000, the projection number would show us still at 1.35% under budget. There are two lines that we continue to watch in particular. The professional and technical service line, which is line 310. Much of this line is going to be offset by the excess cost grant. We are also continuing to watch the contract maintenance and repair line. That's line 430, which we spoke of at length at the facilities meeting earlier. Through our cost savings efforts, we are operating well within budget for the months of November and December, and the projection line has improved significantly because of that. We're still cautious, but we will continue our cost-saving measures throughout the end of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Does anybody have any questions?
I have. Through the chair. Ms. Brown, again, I'm looking at November and December on that heat energy line. That is, I mean, it's quite a bit off. I mean, on both November and December. What do we have to explain that? I mean, what happened? The winter could not have been that much more severe. That's over 30, 35%.
We do expect to see some improvement coming up, because we are going to switch the dual burners over to some prepaid oil that we have, so we expect to see some improvement in our encumbrance there moving forward. So, hold tight to those thoughts. I think you'll see that improve.
Ms. Brown, if I am remembering correctly, we also had some projections that we were ba-- that weren't necessarily accurate going into this budget year. Is that correct?
Yes, yes. Where they're most worrisome is the 430 line, which is the contract maintenance and repairs, where we were talking about before. Things like electrical maintenance, plumbing, HVAC, where we showed, you know, we looked at a trend for the last five years, as Dr. Mola had, Dr. Cardamola had alluded to. We looked at those trends, and each year, there are different unforeseen things that happen. That's the cost of running heavy equipment in a building the size of our schools. And it's our feeling that, you know, what we see here are numbers that don't reflect those trends.
You are correct, Mrs. Brown, and we did want to bring that line to their attention also. But I believe Mr. Lambert and Mrs. Crotty are speaking specifically to the heat energy line, and the answer is yes, when we looked back over the consumption in the previous year, and again, what was budgeted for in the previous year versus the actual that was spent, and then therefore, how that carried forward into this year's budget. This year's budget, if we look at last year's number, there was not enough money in the budget to begin with, and that's part of why you're seeing us over budget. So, yes, we expect to have some savings by switching over to the prepaid oil, but we still have an underlying issue, which is, I believe, the budget line was shorted for this year based on previous year's actual usage.
That makes more sense. Ray, do we, do we show that much inefficiencies on the boiler tuning? When we do get a little more into the contracts for the preventive maintenance, that will be addressed, right, on armpits sizes and efficiencies? So, we're not, we're not overburning the oil or overburning the gas too rich?
We certainly have that discussion.
Yeah.
You know, when we're talking to our contractors. I can tell you that, based on my experience with what we've done with the boilers in the course of the last five years, they're, they're pretty much running at optimum. I don't foresee that being much, we can treat it percentage here and there.
We also always look, I mean, I'm sure the superintendent's involved with this, too, is the way they're treating the energy savings within the building, opening windows and opening doors during the winter and that kind of thing, where we're losing heat here and there. That's also, can be watched probably a little more closely also, right? I mean, we do have those kind of situations going on in there.
Yeah, I'm going to let you write that I was involved, and we had a discussion, and Mrs. Brown sent a memo to the school buildings on our behalf to her speak to that.
That memo went to all district staff, and it was just before the weather turned colder, even before Thanksgiving, and mentioned just some simple cost-saving strategies that we could enforce. Things like, you know, you don't want to have a window open with a heater running next to it, and then, you know, trigger the systems in the building. And when people are operating in their own four-wall classroom space, they're not thinking of the rest of a, you know, massive building, and how what they're doing can affect other things. We, we don't want to see any personal heaters in any classrooms. We don't want to see any microwaves. We don't want to see any refrigerators, things of this nature, and, and just, again, these simple strategies, it just takes up so much energy and power. So, we've worked together as a team, I think, to, to make sure that those things are kept at a, at a minimum. We're essential only, and I think that we've seen some improvement because of that.
Teachers and custodians and everybody's on board.
Right.
Running like we run our own household. I mean, it's really how much--
And, and that's a perfect example. I mean, how many of us turn the heat down at night? I know mine goes down to 62, and then it goes back up, and, and it's, I mean, we have a system where when we're not home, it's at a certain temperature, and, and, you know, the dogs have to deal with that. And when we get home, it's at a different temperature. And we're doing this on a much grander scale in huge buildings, five of them. So, it, it's, it's a simple strategy turns into something very significant.
Ray, at night, some of these are automatically offset?
Yeah.
As in BMS?
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I may, just to close out the discussion, I would expect to see, I can't project yet how much we will be talking about, but given what I explained about this line being underfunded, I would expect to see, moving forward, that we are asking for a line item transfer somewhere down the pike to cover these expenses, and we have, we have known that. We have spoken about this already. We've been watching that all year, and again, it's part of why we've tried to enact some freezes and some other ways of spending, and looking ahead, knowing that there were going to be places we needed to reallocate funds to. So, we're still working hard to operate within the budget, but we may need to change where certain money is allocated as we move forward, and heat energy, I expect to be one of those places.
Thank you.
Do board members have any further questions for Ms. Brown? Before we close, the subject of budget, I would just like to thank Dr. Cardamola, Ms. Brown, and Mr. Sannacola in regards to their work on preparing to present the 2015-16 budget to this board on February 9th. I know that it's been woven into all of your days and minutes and hours of late, and I appreciate that the good day-to-day work is still being done, as we also try to develop that budget, and I appreciate all of the hard work on that. And I know that my fellow board members would also agree. Moving on to item I, committee reports. Mr. Ray Nardella is not here, the Chair of Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and he has advised me that there is nothing to report. Policy and Labor Committee also has nothing to report. Mr. Lambert, do you have anything from Budget and Finance?
No report at this time, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. And, Mr. Lambert, back to you on facilities and operations.
Yes, Madam Chair, we had a Facilities and Operations Committee meeting tonight at 6:30. We reviewed all the updates on electrical status, preventive maintenance contracts, roof situations, general maintenance updates and security. It was very, very, very well done. We got a lot of information. I thank you very much, Mrs. Sannacola, for responding, and we will be having a meeting probably within the next month or two. Go back at it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Mr. Ray Nardella has also indicated there is no report for governance and community engagement. Moving on to item J, communications. Mr. Nardella has also advised there have been no communications for the board. Turn it over to Dr. Cardamola for superintendent's recommendations and report.
Thank you. Again, given the amount of time since the last time we've been here to discuss what's going on, I'll shorten it down to what's most important at this point. I have been at all of the schools, at least once since the last board meeting, although the snow days and the delays have wreaked a little bit of havoc there with my schedule and rescheduling. I had to cancel one office hours because of the weather, for example. However, I've been meeting with people in, in other venues. I, I was at the Rotary Club a couple of weeks ago. I spoke with Rotary Club today. I was at the Senior Center this afternoon. It was their monthly visit with the superintendent. Had a nice discussion with the folks who stayed to see me there. I was at the Waterbury Chamber of Commerce Legislative Breakfast last Friday. It's a, an annual event. It's the Waterbury Regional. I am, I'm on the Board of Directors at the Watertown Chamber of Commerce, but the larger group that encompasses us as the Watertown Chamber is the Waterbury Regional Chamber, and so the annual event there for as many state senators and representatives to come as possible and to discuss the issues. I was invited. I did attend. It was very insightful. Senator Kane was there. Representative Berthel was there, so I was able to speak with both of them, obviously, and also the presidents from Post University and Nogtuck Valley Community College, where we are pursuing, hopefully, down the road, having a partnership with one, if not both of them, for our high school students. That's something Mr. Jones and I are looking into. I'm hoping we're able to enact some more for-credit classes that our students leave the high school and take, primarily at Nogtuck Valley, is looking the way that that will go at this time. Also, I, I did attend the Polk Literacy Night this evening before. I ran in here. I wasn't, obviously, unable to stay for the entirety, but we had a very good turnout. Lot of students and a lot of parents. There were stations that the students went through and read different sorts of books with adults, both teachers and parents, and did activities related to that very. I'd like to thank Mrs. Fecetti for putting together, and Terry, I believe it's Virillo, put together a very nice evening there. At the February 9th, before the February 9th Board of Education meeting, we will have a Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting, and we will discuss the proposed changes to the Watertown High School Program of Studies. That will be an insightful evening, I think, that maybe additional board members may want to attend besides just the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, because you will see how, moving forward, we will be changing graduation requirements, in part because of high school reform laws that are, have been enacted in Connecticut, and also, really, just as a matter of best practice, that we're looking to change some of what we do. For example, require another math credit and so forth. But that will be a fairly extensive presentation from Mr. Jones that evening. I've already been through it with him, and I'd invite anyone who can come to come. Two other points of consideration for the action items this evening. As you know, because many of you have to hear my voice pretty often lately for these snow calls, as I said to some of the parents earlier, I feel like a member of the family. I've called their home so often. That's always a, an exciting part of my school visits, by the way, when the, the light bulb goes on for the little, little kids, particularly at John Trumbull. I was there yesterday, and when they suddenly put two and two together that I'm the voice that calls the house to call off school, it's a very exciting moment for the, the students. We missed a professional development day on Wednesday, when I needed to delay school, and I've explained this before, I believe, but just to say again, when we're going to have a delay, I need to revert to a regular dismissal time so that it counts for a day. I don't want to bring students in late and then send them home early, because then we've, in the eyes of the state, really lost the day, and really, no instruction can go on. So, as a matter of course, this will be the way that, that we do business moving forward. We've done it the last two times. It's, it's been necessary. And unfortunately, though, this half-day, we had a professional development session scheduled, and, as you know, we have a lot of initiatives and a lot of work going on in the district around curriculum, and we really need to make up that day across the district for the curriculum work that's being done, but especially at the high school, where they are doing a lot of work to prepare for the NIESC visit. So, that said, I have looked at the calendar. Ms. Parlato and I spoke. We had some presenters we had to get to come back and reschedule. We've talked to the building administrators to make sure we didn't interfere with any other activities, and we feel that February 12th would be the best day in the near future to reschedule for that professional development. I thought that would be amenable to the parents in the district also, because that is the Thursday that abuts the long weekend. The students are off on Friday and on Monday, so if we have a half-day for students on Thursday, they now have an elongated time, and it also is better for us instructionally that we're not doing it in the middle of a week. It's, they're leaving. So, my recommendation to the board is that we change our current calendar and make February 12th a half-day for students and a professional development day for our teachers. Also, you'll see in the action items, an action item related to the technology grant. I've spoken about this at prior board meetings. This grant works much like the security grant, and like the security grant, Watertown has not been the beneficiary of technology grant money. The last time it was offered, we did not receive any dollars to buy new technology. Those of you who have seen my budget presentation know just how many computers I need to replace in the district, and so I'm hopeful that Ms. Parlato and I, working together on this technology grant, we will get what we ask the state for. We're shooting, we're shooting high. We're asking for, we're certain yet, so you're not approving that, but I think we're going to ask for in the neighborhood of $335,000, because we're going for what the top we've seen issued. We may not get all of that, but we'll at least ask for all of that, and at that, I believe that we'd be around 500 computers. So, I have it as an action item, however, because I want to make sure that, unlike the security grant, that I have a fully informed board and, and school district, that if we're applying for it, it is reimbursement, which means I have to put the money in the budget for the, for the 15-16 year. And as you all know, I plan on putting money in the budget to replace technology anyway. However, I absolutely have to put it in and make certain that I leave it as a line item, because I don't want to have the same situation I have with the security grant, where we now get the money and we can move forward, except we can't, because we can't fund it on our end. So, I'm bringing it to the board's attention so that you understand that we are applying for it. It is reimbursement, when likely, again, it would be a 56% reimbursement rate. So, I want to ensure that I put into our budget 44% of the maximum we ask for, and one of two things will happen. We will get the maximum, and we'll use all of those dollars, or we won't get the maximum, but we'll still use all of those dollars, because we'll get what we get and reimburse it, and whatever's left, we'll buy some computers with. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Cardamola? Moving on to the Chair Report. Tonight, I would like to talk about a special event that's taking place this winter in Watertown. The Watertown Recreation Department and Ordinary Joe's Running Club will host its fourth annual Shamrock Shuffle on Saturday, March 14th, 2015. This year's race has, excuse me, this year's race committee has decided to donate the event proceeds to two important causes that are very close to the Watertown Public Schools' heart. This year, the Guy Bizano Memorial Scholarship will be the recipient of half of the race proceeds. This scholarship will be awarded annually to a Watertown High School senior who displays humanitarian-based values. As we know, Guy was an active member of our community and served on this board as our Board of Ed Chair. Mr. Bizano was a true humanitarian, promoting the welfare of others in both his public and private life. How very fitting that it is his legacy will live on through this annual scholarship named in his honor by giving back to the community that he loves so dearly. The other half of the race proceeds will be donated to the DeFeo family. Angela DeFeo, a sweet, energetic, 12-year-old student at Swift Middle School, was recently diagnosed with a rare and aggressive form of non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. Just barely a week after Christmas, Angela began receiving chemotherapy at Sloan-Kettering Cancer Center in New York. The funds raised for the DeFeo family will help lift the financial burden that this crisis has created. The public has the opportunity to help both of these causes by registering for the March 14th race on the Watertown Recreation website or in person at their office. Participants can choose to walk a two-and-a-half-mile course or participant, or participate in a three-and-a-half-mile run. I ask that you join my family in celebrating one of the fastest-growing road races in the state of Connecticut while helping two causes that are so dear to us. The coincidences of these two important causes are not lost on those of us who knew Guy, and most especially, his family. Angela DeFeo was the exact person that Guy would be helping, and he'd find ways to make it easy for the family to receive it. He would be one of the first to contribute to any public campaigns, to assist her and her family, and he'd encourage others to do the same. But it's the things that he would do privately that define who he was. He'd have his wife Beth pick up double of whatever his family needed and drop things off in silence at the DeFeo family home. He'd be praying for the entire family daily and in church on Sunday. Money would appear in their mailbox, a beautiful handwritten note of support with words that touch their heart. Gas cards and snack, car snacks to make the two-hour journey to Sloan-Kettering easier. Blankets and pillows for the difficult ride home from treatments that he knew so well. You see, Guy suffered from non-Hodgkin's lymphoma, too, and he received his treatments where Angela now receives hers. Guy would help without anyone knowing, and still find ways to wrap the DeFeo family in love. To participate in a community event of this nature is what we are all about. Being there for each other in the good times and in hard times, celebrating the legacy left behind by Guy Bizano, and coming together to provide strength and support to those in need of our help, like Angela. Thank you. Moving on to our action items this evening. Begin with action item M1, consideration to approve the district technology upgrades to support transition to the new standards grant. I ask for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move that the board approve of the submission of the district technology upgrade to support transition to the new standards grant application, to be written and submitted by Ms. Janet Parlato. This grant is intended to provide assistance to local school districts as they continue to apply the Connecticut Core Standards in classrooms and administer the computer adaptive assessments statewide. Funding must be used for the purpose of purchase of new devices and/or purchase of interschool bandwidth infrastructure, inter-district school or facility bandwidth infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Rinaldi. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Action item two, consideration of the approval of an out-of-state field trip to Washington, DC. Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education approve of the out-of-state field trip to Washington, DC from March 25th, 2015, to March 27th, 2015, for 150 Swift Middle School students and 18 chaperones. The purpose of this trip is to enrich, enrich eighth-grade social studies instruction in American history.
Thank you, Ms. Rinaldi. Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Moving on to the next action item, consideration of the approval of an out-of-state field trip to Smithfield, Rhode Island.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Education approve of an out-of-state field trip to Smithfield, Rhode Island, for 19 Watertown High School students for the purpose of competing in the high school robotics team competition. The team will travel to Smithfield, Rhode Island, from March 20th, 2015, through March 22nd, 2015, under the supervision of their certified coaches and several parents who possess first aid and CPR certifications.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So moved. Moving on to the next action item, consideration of approval of half-day for the students February 12th, 2015. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Education approve that February 12th, 2015, be changed from a full day for students to a half-day for students in order to hold the Teacher Professional Development Day that was canceled on Wednesday, January 28th, 2015, due to a weather delay.
Thank you, Ms. Wilk. Is there a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Moving on to our final action item this evening, consideration of the approval of the acceptance of a gift. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Board of Education approve of the acceptance of the generous gift from the Watertown Foundation of $1,250 to support master classes for middle and high school students preparing for the Connecticut Music Educator Association Regionals, and that a letter of thanks be sent to the donor.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Lambert. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you. Moving on to item N, future agenda items and board member comments. Do board members have any future agenda items or comments they wish to share at this Okay, seeing--
I just, first of all, I want to say thank you publicly to the Watertown Foundation, because they have been a great supporter of our schools, and, and this is a great program. We're, we're so delighted that our students are able to do this because of their donation. And also, I thought of this after we moved on, that I want to make sure, and, and we are going to recognize them in a later time, but I want to bring up the fact that our swim parents, both from the Watertown Park and Rec Department, from that end of the swimming, and also the PTO, I mean, the Swimming Booster Club here at the high school, have apparently, for many years, been fundraising, and finally have enough money that they are donating a beautiful new scoreboard for the pool area, and we will recognize them here and so on, as I said, at a later date, but I know the town is recognizing that also, so I didn't want it to go without mentioning that we are very grateful. It has been a lot of fundraising and hard work for them to come with this donation, and it will be a great addition to the pool at Watertown High School, so I want to publicly thank our swim parents.
I echo your sentiments, and I appreciate you bringing that up at this time. Any other comments? Future agenda items? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our second round of public participation. Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Are there any members of the public that wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Mr. Lambert, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wilk. We are adjourned. Time is 8:11.